Good evening. My name is Carissa Orin and I am the Columbia Heights Federation of Teachers Local 710 Union President. I also teach at Highland Elementary in the full-day pre-K 4s program. I apologize for not being able to be there in person, but I wanted to warmly welcome you to this candidate forum. Several of my colleagues are in attendance and will help facilitate the discussion this evening. On behalf of Local 710, welcome.
We're going to wait two more minutes to see if our other candidates show up. Hello, candidates. My name is Daniel Honigs and I am not only the moderator, I am also the second Vice President of Local Number 710 Columbia Heights Federation of Teachers, which is the chief negotiator. I serve as the chief negotiator, so we'll be negotiating with the board and with the school district coming up on our upcoming negotiations later this year. And I'll be moderating this forum. I'd like to remind everybody that we'll have opening remarks to begin with. They will be three minutes apiece. Dawn Hoyam here, who is the executive secretary.
Administrative Assistant.
Administrative Assistant, but executive, I got that part right. Good. And so she will have time here. She'll give you a look at one minute left, 30 seconds left, and then a stop. Okay? And then when we address questions, we will have two minutes apiece for your answers. We will rotate on who starts and it'll just be, we'll drop off first person, I believe. We'll be starting, if Mr. Laurie shows up, we would start with him and then, oh, I'm sorry, with the opening remarks, it'll be Ms. Hul and then we'll move on from there. And then you'll be the last one and so on. I'm pretty sure you've been in forums like this. There will be no closing statements at the end, so just realize that. And I have four pre-prepared questions to ask and then we will be collecting questions. My colleague behind me, she will be collecting those questions and assembling them and getting me those questions. If there are similar questions, she will try and combine them into a single question. So if four different people ask the same thing, she'll try to make sure that the theme of all four of those questions can combine them into a single question for you. And that's what we'll be doing. So, without further ado, Ms. Hul.
So just to introduce myself, and, okay. I'm Julie Hul. I am a mom of two adult children, so I'm done raising them. They are out on their own, thank goodness. One is married, which I'm really glad. I have a cat and I have been, I wanted to run for office this time around because I felt like I have a time in my life where, now that my kids are gone, that I can serve now. I feel like, you know, I've been in that learning stage and early in my career, earning stage, and now I'm at that kind of towards the end of my career where it's time to start serving. And I really have a passion for children. And so I think this would be a good fit for me to be able to serve and to help. And, you know, I've been married 40 years to my husband and so that long relationship is a really solid foundation in my life. So if you want to get to know me, I do have a website too that kind of gives a little more detail. But I'm excited to be here and hope that I can get on the board and be of help.
Thank you. Ms. Maderas.
Thank you. Well, first, thank you very much to Local 710 for hosting the forum this evening. And thanks to everyone who is here at the family center attending in person and to the community members that are also watching this forum online. My name is Jessica Maderas and I've lived with my family as a resident of Columbia Heights for the last 11 years. I have two kids that are enrolled in the district over at Highland. And since my time, you know, moving to Heights, I have been a really active volunteer as a parent and community member at individual schools and across the district. So I've built a lot of relationships with families, with educators, and with community members when it comes to moving our education forward in this district. Professionally, I work in higher education administration. I have experience at a community college, a technical college, and a four-year university. So I understand very clearly the importance of connection with college and career readiness and what that means for different students, and I care about that deeply. I also have experience as an education organizer and an advocate, and that's experience I hope to leverage as a board member to really drive forward the needs of our community to decision-makers and partner with those that can help also drive our district forward. I'm also a licensed attorney, which I think gives me a really unique perspective on policy development and revision, not only through the lens of compliance, but also making sure that our policies align with the strategic roadmap and the values of the district as well as the board's equity statement. I'm running for school board because I care deeply about public education. And I believe that Columbia Heights Public Schools is a shining foundational asset to our whole community. I know our schools, I follow the work of the board, and I think I can contribute a unique voice in support of equity, student success. I want to help celebrate and expand on what's already working and successful across the district and help to advance, you know, meeting our most urgent challenges as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
Ms. Palmer.
Yes, thank you very much for hosting this forum this evening. I am Laura Palmer. I am actually, unbelievably, this is my 12th year on the board, so I've seen a great deal of changes. I've lived in the Columbia Heights community for, oh, 30 years. I have my first, my oldest child started kindergarten over at North Park in 1991. I've had a student in Columbia Heights District since 1991 continuously. My last one, too soon to leave the nest, is currently a sophomore, which is unbelievable too, you know? They grow up so fast. I've been very, very proud of the work that the district has done. I, I'm sorry, I was trying to decide whether or not I was going to mention this this evening. I did recently suffer a loss this summer. My husband passed away at the end of June, and he was a really big supporter for me. I'm very proud of the work that I did on the district. Part of the reason, we had discussed running again, and he was very much in support of that. I only bring this up so that, getting it stuck in my throat here is, it's a little hard to overcome sometimes. I'm failing here miserably, but I wanted to say that the compassion that the whole community has given me, I cannot tell you how I could not have gotten through the first month and the first day without all of the phone calls and support and letters and everything. I'm so grateful and I really want to give back by making sure that we have the best outcomes for all of our students. I'm very proud of our equity work that we've been doing and I'd like to see that continue. We've got the Student Voice has been something that I've really advocated for a great deal over the past few years, and I'd like to see that come to fruition so that we're really getting the great feedback that we're, the great and honest feedback that we have been looking for. And I think I'm just going to close with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Zymet.
Hi, I'm Brenna Zymet and I'm currently on the board. I was appointed in December to fill Holla's space as she moved out of district. It's been a really awesome experience to be on the board for the last several months and be part of building the equity statement that has come out, that's going to work as a guide for the equity work that we're going to do as a district. I'm really excited about that. I've lived in Columbia Heights for 19 years. I've got four kids that are at all levels right now. I have one that just graduated. I've got one at the middle school. I've got two in elementary. So I understand how each of our buildings work and who the people are that are in charge of stuff. And I've got really good relationships with teachers and staff and administration. And I just, I love Heights schools. My kids have had the best education. They have the best, just diverse classrooms full of so many beautiful cultures and they've learned so much. Every day they come home and they tell me these crazy new facts that they've learned. I was able to be part of North Park as we switched into North Park School for Innovation and became more of a STEM-based school. I was able to help as we got funds to secure the entrance at North Park and to get the remodel done on the PAC and our band room. I've been able to be a driver within our community for the schools. I managed a small business for a while here in town. I've pastored here in Heights and I love our community. And I really feel like my responsibility on the board is to be an elected representative, which means that I represent you at the table. So I want to be a voice for the people who are not at the table, especially our underrepresented groups. I want to advocate. I have parents come and talk to me all the time about things that are and aren't working. And I'm able to bring those things to the school and see things get fixed and see changes happen. And I'm about engagement. I want to see our communication as a school and with the community become more two-way so that we are definitely meeting the needs that maybe we're not hearing about all the time. And so I'm on the communication, or the Engagement Subcommittee and have been working hard to build those bridges within our community. And then most of all, just equity is my heart. I want to see all of the cultures that are represented in our schools see themselves in their own learning. And I want all to belong and all to succeed like equally in our schools so that every student gets the same level of great opportunities here.
Thank you. So now for the first of our five questions, and let me remind you that you will have two minutes to respond to these. So the first question, and Ms. Maderas, you'll be starting on this. Addressing equity in our schools is one of the board's goals. How would you support that goal?
Thank you. There are so many ways that the board is already engaged in that work in support of the equity statement. And I think we should be looking at what is working to expand those things, but there's also many things that need to happen in order to really bring that equity statement into action. So first of all, one thing that I would be really excited to work on if elected is development and revision of the school board policies and looking at those policies through an equity-based lens. And what that really means for me is considering, you know, what are the goals of the policy? Who was that policy designed for? Who's been included? Who's been historically excluded? And making sure that equitable policy is understandable, that it's accessible, that it's using gender-inclusive language, and that it's identifying and eliminating barriers really to not just education, but economic, racial, and social injustice. So that's one piece that I think can really drive the equity statement forward. I also think we need to be continuing to find ways to recruit and retain students, or I'm sorry, staff and educators who represent the diversity of our students and looking at different ways we can do that, expanding on programs that are working like Black Men Teach, and thinking about other ways that we can continue to mentor and retain high-quality teachers. And then I also think that the focus and a really critical, central theme of the equity work we do is what is actually happening in terms of school climate and looking at what we're doing in terms of really investing in the resources that are making students feel seen, that are making students feel valued, and are making students feel like they really belong. Thank you.
Ms. Palmer.
Equity work is, has become a real passion of mine. We have been working really hard on the board to really learn as much about where, how to look for inequities within the system systematically. Policies are a really big driver to make sure that our policies are in line and are not individually, or indiscriminately discriminating against any student in particular. I would like to continue the work where we're doing book readings that are alignings with the work that the district as a whole is doing as well. I think it's very important as a board member to participate in the growth and the education that the district is doing. That's some things. In addition to that, I would really like to see us have a better communication with bringing more voices, real voices, to the table and giving real power and voice to people that are unheard. That, I think, is going to take quite a bit of work and groundwork to be able to create those safe spaces, and I'd like to participate in that as well. And student voice, that's, again, I mentioned earlier, I'm a very big advocate of that, of finding out what the kids are seeing because they do see our education system through a different lens than we do. There are things that they can offer to help to improve their educational experience. Thank you.
Ms. Zymet.
Can you ask that again for me?
Absolutely. Addressing equity in our schools is one of the board's goals. How would you support that goal?
I helped write the equity statement and I think that my biggest bring to the table on this one is being somebody who listens to the community and brings issues to the table. So I ask tough questions at the board table all the time. We really are an accountability space. We don't set curriculum, but we set vision for curriculum. We don't teach in the classrooms, but the, we're given presentations about what's going on in the school. And we are able to ask the tough questions and make sure that we're going in the direction that helps all of our students. And I know for me, like, the things that I've heard from the community that I've taken action on is bringing to the table the idea of some LGBT policy and how it is that we can make sure that our students from that group are feeling like they belong, they feel like they're seen, they're addressed correctly the way that they want to be talked to. I've brought forward concerns we've had about our SROs. I've brought forward concerns that we've had from families that don't speak English as a first language, trying to communicate with our admin and get their students at the beginning of the day. I've talked with families that are having issues with SED, with their special ed programming, and coming with those issues to the table to make sure that we have solutions. Because what I know is that our admin team and our teachers love our kids and they want the best. And as representatives, we are the, we have the ability to be that bridge between the community and the school to make sure that everybody's needs are being met.
Ms. Hul.
Thank you. I do believe that our children need to feel like they belong. And it sounds like prior to the equity statement that we had challenges, that they didn't feel like they belonged. And yet that's part of our core values. I would say that an equity statement is a good thing. However, I kind of think that it's a distraction. We have kids that aren't reading. You know, the rates of reading and math, we just saw the data that came out of the Minnesota Department of Education, and the kids need help in these basic education pieces. Yes, if they're, if we have challenges of not providing a safe space psychologically for some kids to feel, you know, that they need to be listened to and understood, you know, our kids already are supported by our great teachers. Ninety percent of them responded that they thought their teachers really cared about them. I think our teachers are amazing and that when you develop or create an environment of caring, those teachers are the front line. They catch those things. When students are not feeling supported or helped or not, things aren't fair, they should, I would assume they're going to their teachers and feel comfortable doing that. So, you know, when it comes to an equity statement, I think it's a lot of nice things and nice words, but I think we need to refocus and look at what is the result of the equity statements or these kinds of policies as it comes down to what is our return on investment? We've spent a lot of money on probably consultants to help us develop those policies. Well, at the end of the day, that thousands of dollars didn't result in, isn't resulting in numbers at the end of the day.
Thank you. Onto our second question. How would you be an advocate for the needs of the district on a legislative level? We will start with Ms. Palmer.
We definitely need to talk to our representatives. We need to explain the challenges that we have with mandates that they put into place that they're not, they're not funding. We have a cross-subsidy promises that are made for us to be able to provide these services that are also not funded. We were promised and we've never received the level of funding to even cover half of what our actual costs are. And that money comes out of the general fund. There are all sorts of things that the legislature could do to be able to reduce, reduce the tightening budgets that we have. There is less and less to do more and more with, and we really need to explain and in great detail over and over again to our legislature so that they can make those changes and also keep a track of whenever they're thinking about this new great thing that they're going to force down on the schools, that we need to make sure we have input to make sure that those policies and laws that they're putting into place are going to create the benefit that they believe that they will achieve. And a lot of times, good intentions have the opposite outcome. I've seen that in the past, and I'm just hoping we can forestall those in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Zymet.
Yeah, I've got great relationships with our local representatives and senator, and I'm talking to them a lot about cross subsidies and the fact that we have money that we're taking out of our general fund to pay for special ed, to pay for English language learners, money that they've mandated that we spend, but then they don't fund the way that they're supposed to. So that's one thing that we're always talking about. The other thing that I know we were talking about this year was the school lunch forms that start at the beginning of every year that everybody is supposed to fill out actually control some of our money. And so sometimes people don't fill them out because they don't think that they're going to need school lunch. And for a couple of years, there was free lunch, so people didn't fill them out. And that hit our budgets. And part of that, I mean, all that is is paperwork at the legislative level, and we need to, we need to understand what's happening in our schools so that we can talk to our legislators about what they need to change. Stuff like our MDE numbers that are absolutely inaccurate to what's happening in our schools. Twenty-two 11th graders took the MCAs last time that they were recorded. And so obviously, of all of our 11th graders, if only 22 took it and all of the rest of them got fails because they didn't take it, our numbers are going to look horrible when in reality, our kids can read. They are not, they are not unable to read, they're not unable to do math. That just is what it looks like because at the legislative level, they are not understanding how things actually run here in our schools. So we, as board members, are able to go to those legislators and say, "We need you to do this differently. We need you to measure differently. We need you to look at different inputs so that you can see how our kids are growing and how they're going from this reading level to three districts, or three levels ahead." Even if they haven't met the standard that you've put, they have grown.
Ms. Hul.
Thank you. I'm new to being on a board or thinking through this. I hadn't really thought about how to lobby our legislators. However, after hearing Brenna and Laura's remarks, it sounds like there's some mandates that the government has said we need to do. I would definitely support our government in funding those things that they've already promised. If that isn't the case, I know that, as I was reading through the board minutes, I noticed that we get general fund monies from the general public as well. So there's donations that come in, maybe, you know, having some ideas on how to allocate funds differently, and maybe we have to, but coming up with a priority list, you know, based on what parents might think and that kind of thing from a budgetary standpoint might be helpful. However, when it comes to the legislature, I would definitely support if they are mandating things that we are supposed to do and not funding it, that we should probably have that conversation.
Ms. Maderas.
Thank you. I would say that when it comes to influencing the legislature to make decisions in support of public education, that there's power in partnership, right? So a lot of the challenges that we face as a district are not isolated to Columbia Heights and in fact are shared not only by school districts across the state, but very acutely by a lot of our metropolitan school districts. So I would really like to see the board and the district partner with other school districts and on areas where we have mutual concerns, working with the Minnesota School Board Association, working with the Association of Metropolitan School Districts to drive those messages forward. The other thing I would say is that while it's great for legislators to hear from these associations, to hear from districts, to hear from admin, the adage that the personal is the political is really true, right? So hearing from educators directly, hearing from students directly about their experiences, amplifying the experiences and the stories of our families in our district, that's what's most compelling. And I can tell you that as a parent in this district, there are very few things that have been more emotionally impactful to me than when my children's education has been impacted by things like funding cuts as a result of some of the financial challenges that some of the other candidates have mentioned. And so if I was elected, one thing that I would really like to do is leverage my experience in organizing to really bring forward the stories and experiences of our community in ways that our legislators really see the impact of the decisions that they're making at the Capitol. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for our third question. How does the role of a school board member differ from that of a parent or community member? We'll start with Ms. Zymet.
Well, a school board member is highly regulated versus a parent or a community member. I know for myself, I'm actually kind of in the middle of that learning curve. I have kids in the schools and I was very active coming to the principals when I had problems and walking in the doors and kind of, kind of being in the midst of things. And as a board member, there's chain of command, there's laws that govern the fact that as a school board, we are governance, we're not management. And so it isn't my job to come in and yell at a principal about a person in the, in the community that's having problems. I have to go through the proper channels. And it's, it's great to be able to... And it's, it's great to be able to, to have a line to some of those higher spaces where we can really do hands-on problem solving. But I also have to really understand that with this power comes a responsibility to, to our community, to the good of all students versus my student, to the good of all cultures, not just my culture. And, and I have to be here for everybody, not just my kids.
Thank you. Ms. Hul.
Could you repeat the question?
Absolutely. How does the role of a school board member differ from that of a parent or community member?
Thank you. A board member is, is leadership and governance. So the responsibility of a board member is not necessarily to manage the company. That's what we have our superintendent for, but we hold them accountable. So we hold management accountable to their goals, to our, our values, and also to, you know, when there's issues that they bring them to us as a, as a resource for them. So I feel like we're here to supply that governance information to help, help our management do their job well. So from a board member's standpoint, I would say that we're, we're not necessarily in the weeds, but we're also here to guide and help. And so I would be there for, specifically for our leadership to drive our vision. And that's, that's our challenge. As a parent, parents have access to everyone and should, should, should be, sorry, should be able to speak to everyone, either the board, teachers or others, when they have concerns. And as a board member, I would be a listener and understanding what the needs are from, from a parent and hopefully bring in management at that point if I'm, if they have a concern. We bring it back to management and say, hey, there's concerns coming up. So it's more of a leadership and holding leader and management accountable.
Thank you. Ms. Maderas.
Thanks. Well, a lot has already been said that I agree with, but I would add that as a board member, there's a future visioning component to the work that's different from a parent advocating for or, you know, helping to advance their own children through the, the education system. So looking at what is the vision that we want for our students and our graduates, five years out, 10 years out, and then what do we do from a governance perspective to help get us there? I would also say that the board obviously has a fiduciary obligation to the community and to the district that parents don't have. And in general, you know, the role of a board member is to not only be accountable to the community as someone who's elected to serve, but also to represent the community broadly. And so I do also think it's the role of a board member to connect a community voices to the board, to listen to those voices and to also find ways for the community to engage other than being a board member, right? So what are we doing to make engagement opportunities more accessible for folks in our community that otherwise are not at the table? So expanding virtual options, looking at asynchronous opportunities to engage, going out into the community to do that outreach so that we're really making sure that we're representing the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is a thing that really takes a little bit of a learning curve when you first start on the board because you're very much used to being just the total advocate for your children and that's your only concerns, you know? This is what I want and this is what we need to get done, you know? Now, as a board member, you really have to sometimes do that second question whenever you're making a policy decision. Am I making this policy decision because it's best for my child or am I making this policy decision because it's best for all of the students, even if my child doesn't directly benefit? And we need to make sure that we're always, when you, you have a responsibility, an obligation, you need to be accountable to make sure that you are doing the best for all of the students. And sometimes you gotta make decisions that, that your kids don't like, you know? So I would just, I would just put that out there. You just really have to be very, very conscious. Make sure that you're wearing the right hat whenever you walk into the room.
Thank you. And now for our fourth question. And a, kind of also keep in mind that we're still in the middle, maybe getting towards the end of the COVID-19 pandemic. So when you hear this question, keep that in mind. What are the challenges and opportunities facing public schools during the COVID-19 pandemic? We'll start with Ms. Hul.
I believe the challenge is getting kids in school when, when wearing masks for little children is very difficult all day long. Carbon dioxide in that mask going to their brains. We're finding, you look at the statistics, we find more mental health issues with the, with the masks. I'm more concerned about that than, you know, COVID. I think we've caused a problem with all of these mandates that our governments have put on us. And so for me, I feel like the, the mandates of masks and COVID were very detrimental. Kids had to learn from home. If you're not a good reader, you're reading things on the screen all the time and that can be really difficult. I just think that we dug ourselves a hole and we've gotta somehow pull us out. Our teachers are the answers to that and, and I think it can be done, but there's, there's still a gap. And I just, you know, hopefully we can come up with some innovative ways to answer the challenges that those, that the masking brought on. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maderas.
Thank you. I mean, I would say the COVID-19 pandemic is, has caused a lot of challenges, but is still continuing to cause a lot of challenges within our school, not the least of which is, is safety. We've required ongoing response throughout this entire pandemic and at this point, though things are continuing to change, you know, we still have 400 Americans dying every day from COVID. And we as a community are not immune to that. So we have had students in our community who have lost caregivers and what, what do we do from a trauma-informed lens to make sure that their school community is a safe place for them to learn and we're responding to that. We have had families in our districts who have had job loss as a result of the pandemic and the trauma that that causes for families. We have students coming back to our buildings who have a lot of increasing needs that go beyond academics. There's certainly an academic need there that the district is doing a lot to try and shore up now that we're back in buildings, but you know, students have more mental health needs than ever before. Our educators who certainly are there for our students and support them are burned out. This has been a really difficult few years for everyone. So I think that those challenges continue and I'd also just add that not just within our school system, but across our community, that COVID-19 as a pandemic and all of the tales that come along with that have exacerbated a lot of disparities that have already existed within our communities and within our schools. And so there's, there's a lot that's continuing to happen in terms of response and we really need to be supporting our students and our educators and our administration in meeting those needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer.
Yes, I agree with quite a bit of what you've said there, but I would actually like to also thank all of the staff that really did the job. Multiple lesson plans, are we going to be in person? Are we going to be, you know, online? Are we going to have to pivot and do asynchronous learning? The amount of, of extra work and preparation that has gone on at the district level for all of the staff and the students learning new technologies, those were all challenges in the beginning. But we did see some very, very interesting innovations, which I'm kind of excited about. We all learned how to deal with Zoom. We, in addition to that, I was really fascinated to see some of the original statistics that came out with, with attendance rates over at the high school. We had a really high attendance rates during COVID at the high school level. I thought that was really interesting and something that we need to look into was like, why? It doesn't say anything about engagement though. I would, there really wasn't much of a measure for that, so that's certainly a challenge. But there are still all of these waves that have, that, that we're still dealing with and trying to put in those extra supports to make sure that the students are receiving what they need emotionally because there was a lot of isolation. I do find this being a very big concern. So reintegrating them back into the community and socializing in addition to academics. And I'm pretty sure that's going to say stop in about a half a second, right? All right.
Thank you. And Ms. Zymet.
You know, I think that here in Heights, we experienced a lot of those disparities in our learning, especially in distance learning. We have so many households with multiple working parents and there were kids that were taking care of their siblings while they were trying to learn online, while they were trying to keep things running. We had, we were giving out hotspots. Not everybody had the technology, not everybody had the internet access. And I was blown away by how our school district just made a way for kids to learn, even though this was a huge lift. And I've been blown away by how our teachers have come through the trauma of COVID and all of the ways that they have struggled and, and have just kept going, even as our kids come back with some trauma and even as our kids come back trying to figure out how to learn stuff. When you watch a kindergarten class at the beginning of a year, it's herding cats, right? But you get them into a rhythm. But when kids are out of school for a couple of years, all that rhythm goes away. And I've watched our teachers try and reteach kids to sit, reteach kids to ask to go to the bathroom, reteach kids to be in class. And so all of those just tough things that, that came from going through something that everyone else in the world struggled with. Our teachers have done it with grace and they're tired and that's hard and we're understaffed and that's hard. And we're working hard to see what we can do to bring everybody back to where we were before COVID and, and even further ahead with the technology that we've, that we've gained through this because there have been cool things that have come out of it as well. But I think that mental health and trauma and some of those disparities are lingering and they, they linger in some of the learning setbacks that are out there. And yet I see progress happening because our teachers are working super hard.
Thank you. At this point, I want to tell our, our audience behind me, we'll be starting on our last question, pre-prepared question. We have quite a few questions here, but I know that there are some other people that have come in. So if anybody in the audience has any questions, there are index cards on the back table and if you want to write down your question and bring it up here to Arian, she'll go ahead and take that and we'll work it into our, our audience asked questions. I'll also let everybody know, we would like to be done at seven o'clock. So depending on how we go with our questions, and I may ask that we shorten responses on the audience asked questions to maybe a minute and a half in order to accommodate all the questions. So without further ado then. Yeah, this, this is still two minutes, correct, because it's a pre-prepared question. And we will start with Ms. Maderas when we go. So now with our last question, forecasting beyond the COVID-19 pandemic over the next four years. What do you see as the challenges and opportunities facing public school districts? Ms. Maderas.
Thank you. First of all, some of the financial challenges have already been discussed in earlier questions, but I do think that that's going to be one of our most critical challenges over the next four years. We've talked a little bit about the SPAD and the Yale Cross Subsidy and how that impacts our budgets. But in addition to that, the, the state and federal funding streams for a very long time have been very uncertain and insufficient, especially when that impact is exacerbated by inflation. And when our state and federal sources are not living up to their commitment to fund certain expenditures, that falls back on, on the district. And, you know, over the last seven years, the district has already cut six and a half million dollars from their budget. And that's at a time when inflation, as we all know, is, is at its highest. So I, I just want to say that I think that's one of the most critical challenges because insufficient funding impacts everything that we're trying to do as a district. It impacts academic growth, it impacts curricular offerings, it impacts the workload and the ability to retain quality educators. It impacts us making quality on our equity goals, it impacts us investing in the services that make community schools strong and that our students need to be successful. So I think that's going to be our primary challenge moving forward. I have 30 seconds and I'm going to use every second of it. The other thing I would say is that identifying and eliminating barriers to equity, inclusion and belonging that we've talked about already in the session is a critical challenge because it's also hard for students to reach their full potential if there are systemic or institutional barriers that are in the way and if our school climates are not places where they feel valued. So to me, those are our most critical challenges. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Ms. Palmer.
Funding. It will definitely be funding. Our cross subsidy right now is, is, it, it's only going to get more and more significant. It's going to eat a larger and larger and larger point, part of our general fund. And there are things that we definitely need to do that we're going to need resources for. Our equity statement is not just pretty words, it's actionable. We want to be accountable for every single line in that statement and be able to make movement in each of those areas. And staying on course with that as well is extremely, it's going to be, it's going to be challenging because I have a feeling we're going, we might find things that we're really going to be uncomfortable with and we have to be okay with that. We're going to make mistakes and we, we have to fix it. So I, I really want to stay on task with that and it would be very easy to say, well, we've gone this far and, you know, that's good enough, we're done and let's move on to something else. And we can't do that. We really have to keep going back and back and back and looking at things over and over again to make sure that we have a fair and equitable system. But we definitely need more funding because I do believe that we are going to need more support staff to make sure that we, that we can actually provide the services that we need to and provide, and, and give the staff assistance and backing so that they can not be so overwhelmed with all of, all we're asking of them. Because we ask an awful lot and there's not a whole lot more that, that we're giving in return. So I, I just want to make sure that we're giving everybody the resources that we need, that they need, and that the students need and continuing to do our work in equity and to be accountable.
Thank you. Ms. Zymet.
We read it again for me, sorry.
Absolutely. Forecasting beyond the COVID-19 pandemic over the next four years, what do you see as the challenges and opportunities? What do you see as the challenges and opportunities facing public school districts?
Obviously, funding is number one. I mean, it's been said now several times. And I think that we see that in our staffing. We have been struggling to hire teachers, just like every other school has struggled to hire teachers. But in a school district like ours where budgets are so tight, we cannot be competitive without better funding. And we cannot run our buildings without enough staff. When we have open positions for building monitors for a year and a half because we're paying less than they'll make at Caribou, we are not going to have the bodies in the building that it needs for us to have equity in our buildings. Our kids need enough adults to come and meet them when they're having behavior issues, to come and help them when they're having mental health crisis, to be there to keep them safe as they get back into their routines. And there's a teacher shortage. And in order for us to be able to bring in the best teachers and the number of teachers and staff that we need, that money has to come. Our COVID money has kept us afloat and that money is not coming back after this. And I think that we are going to see a drop off that is, it's going to be shocking. I mean, and then when you add in inflation, I mean, our insurance went up $50,000 just in our last thing, just because it did building supplies to fix our buildings when they break. Our quadruple what they were a year ago. Like all of the things are more expensive and we have to have the money to make sure that our kids have what they need and our teachers have what they need.
Thank you. And Ms. Hul.
Thank you. I think in the next four years, I understand the revenue stream is tight. But that isn't always the way you get everything done is by earning revenue. Sometimes you have to cut costs and that's a tough topic. But you may have to prioritize things. We can't be everything to everybody. And in the next four years, we need to, we need to pull our academics up. I mean, the only thing the public sees, parents see, are that data from the Minnesota Department of Education. If we can't change that or provide enough information to show parents that we're doing better, they're going to keep leaving. Our district, we have a lot of students, but we have a lot of open enrollment as well. Some people coming out of Minneapolis, for instance, about 30% come out of Minneapolis into our school district. And yet for us, you know, we've got to deal with all of these kids. But are we trying to be too much for everyone? And I think that needs to be considered. Hiring people, you know, teachers. You know, if we have an equity statement that says now we got to diversify our teacher base and we can only find white teachers and we're struggling with finding teachers, now we're bifurcating our teacher staff, trying to figure out, well, we need to be diverse, but 90% of the applicants are white. So I just think we put ourselves in a hole when we start saying, you know, yes, we have to have diversity, but I think we also have to have the teachers. So for me, that next four years is really looking at those numbers, seeing what we're doing now and figuring out how, you know, we can get more revenue or end up with cutting some costs that we might have to do. It's a hard decision.
Thank you. So as we transition into audience questions here and reminding all of the candidates that we will shorten it to about a minute and a half for our responses, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank some people that helped put this together. Person on my right hand side, Arianne Kokish, as well as her counterpart in helping us do governmental relations and voter outreach and other things, Mark Renner have been instrumental in helping to put this together as well as a lot of other things. So I want to thank them for their work in this. And then, of course, my president, Carissa Urin, who couldn't be here tonight. She's been instrumental in making sure all this happens. On top of that, in getting the space and organizing what goes on here, Dawn Hoyam and our superintendent, Xenia Stenvik, have been very helpful in making sure that this forum goes off without a hitch. Oh, yeah. There are also refreshments over here on our left hand side. This is why I have Dawn. She reminds me to remind you. So if anybody would like to get up and get some refreshments, we have water and cookies over there. Please take this opportunity right now as we transition to please get a cookie. Heights Bakery, support local. I think it was a Heights Bakery comment.
I know. Sorry tonight, so. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll start this next question with Ms. Palmer. And if you need me to repeat the question at any point, please do so. One minute and 30 seconds on your response. How can the school district support parent engagement, especially with working families?
Yeah, that's been, that's been something that we've been really, really working on. I haven't been part of the Community Engagement Subcommittee yet, but I know that we're trying quite a number of things. They have actually, I do know that, that as far as like conferences are concerned, parents having the opportunity to be able to attend conferences via Zoom has been actually quite, quite good. I know as a parent, I actually had a conference with my daughter's math teacher at nine o'clock at night because it worked best for both of us. And being able to have that accommodation when I was working was absolutely amazing. But there, there's always ways we can do this better. And I know that Brenna has been working really, really hard on that. And I will support anything that we can do to improve the engagement.
Thank you. Ms. Zimet.
Yeah, on the Community Engagement Committee, this is one of our big topics. We just started something called a virtual comment box where we've got a QR code where you can go to a Google Doc and talk to us about stuff and we will respond back to you. I, I'm the parent of a middle schooler. I love every Sunday at 5:30, my phone rings and it is Mr. Burke is talking to me because he tells me what's going to happen this next week. I got an email through Parent View from a band teacher the other day. All of our teachers, I think this is again, something great that came out of COVID. There's so many different pieces of technology that we use now to communicate with each other. And I'm really excited about all of those having language interpretation involved with them so that it's not just working parents, but also parents that speak languages other than English that are able to communicate well with our teachers and staff and admin. And I know for us as a board, it's really important to us that we are responsive when people do come to us and that we are, we're getting back to you quickly and doing as much as we can to make sure that your needs are heard.
Thank you. Ms. Hul.
I actually like some of what Brenna was saying. Technology is a wonderful thing and parents can easily Zoom call nowadays with teachers and staff when they have questions or concerns. I also think about, you know, parents that may be outside the district that send their kids here, they can't vote, but they're, they need to be engaged anyway. And so using technology is a good thing, but maybe even having coffee sit downs you know, where you can have parents come and ask questions and be informed of anything new coming up on the board or in the schools. And address their concerns. If they have significant concerns, maybe systemic things that they're seeing that we can address them, you know, one-on-one and then bring it to leadership and have them consider what could we change? So I kind of like the idea of getting parents engaged that way, face to face, and having maybe those sit downs, you know, just to be able to talk with them. I also think we'd love to get parents back in schools helping. So if we can get volunteers, that's another thing. I mean, we're stretched thin on staff and we could, you know, there's like little risk if you're helping the preschoolers and the kindergartners and stuff. You know, parents don't have to know significant, you know, trigonometry and stuff like that for that. And that's really a critical time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maderas.
Thank you. Parental engagement is a topic near and dear to my heart because I serve as a PTO president at Highland right now. And also as a parent in this district who follows the work of the school board in the past, I have sometimes been kind of critical about the level of involvement that has been offered to families and the ways in which information is delivered. I agree that the board has done so much to advance opportunities for engagement in the last few years. I think establishing the Subcommittee on Community Engagement has been fabulous. Having those listening sessions out in the community, in person and virtually, has been a great way for families to engage. But I do think there's always the opportunity for continuous improvement around that. And I think one of the things that I hear from parents within my own school is not wanting to step up or being afraid to step up because they don't know what that burden of time is going to be to get information or to be involved. So finding out what matters to parents in the district and finding ways for them to connect with those things that really matter to them. So maybe that's what their student is learning and how to support that at home. Maybe it's building community at their school. Maybe it's being involved in decision-making or being part of budget discussions. But I think there are lots of ways to expand the technology and the things that we're already doing to reach into communities that have otherwise not been engaged. Thanks.
Thank you. And for our second question from the audience, we will start with Ms. Zimet. Tell me about your experience in being able to understand, manage, and prioritize budgets transparently so that we know that every dollar is well spent for our kids.
Well, the beautiful thing about Columbia Heights Schools is all of that stuff is online. If you go onto our website, you can access our budgets. You can access our line-by-line stuff. And lots of times people have questions and they feel like maybe we're not being transparent or that stuff's not out there, but it is. And every time that we have a school board meeting, it's published. And you can even get our little packets that have the data in them that we see. And above board, everything that we do has to be public. Like we're not even allowed to like have conversations more than three of us together because everything has to be in the public eye because we are supported by tax dollars and that's what the law says. And so I love that that already exists because I came into a system that already does that. And I think that part of, part of the thing is that people don't necessarily know where to find those things. So if you go to our website, you can search any of those things that you have questions on. I'm always happy to talk to you. I bring stuff to Director Henneken sometimes when I don't understand it and he's great about helping us know how things work. And any of us board members are more than happy to help you find the information that you need if you do have questions.
Thank you. Ms. Hul.
Thank you. As a certified public accountant and risk management manager, I work with numbers every day. That's what I do. The financial information is not exactly transparent because everything gets summarized eventually. So you kind of need more granularity to understand where the money is going because it'll be just summarized as staff, as, you know, supplies, whatever. And so the other thing is, is it's not easy to find. I had to dig and dig and dig and the board packets are not out there. I've looked, so you probably have to send a request in, which a lot of people are a little uncomfortable doing. And they may not know that they can request that information. So I think transparency is valuable for us. When we're transparent, we're showing we're not hiding anything. That's why we need funding because this is where our costs are going. So I feel like transparency improves our credibility to our customer base, our parents, our stakeholders. And I think it's really necessary. So that's where I stand when it comes to financial transparency.
Thank you. Ms. Maderas.
Thank you. I do have experience in working in formal governments within higher education, which within higher ed, being accountable to a board that's accountable for state and federal dollars that go to education in a complex way. I would say that I agree that the district as a whole has all of that information available for folks to see. I would also say that one thing that I think the district is doing really well is bringing the community into those conversations. I serve on the District Financial Advisory Committee and that's made up not just of parents or administration, but it's made up of community members, folks that own businesses in Heights and give them an opportunity not just to see the information and get the information, but also to ask questions and also to really give feedback on what they think we should be investing funds in. So I know in that, in that committee, we talked about what should we be doing with, you know, these pandemic dollars that we're getting, right? What are, what are we doing with this and how are we investing it to help students? I do think that the complexity of school finance can often breed confusion. And I think it can cause a lot of skepticism around whether or not the district is being transparent. And so I think the board can also continue to look at ways to break down information to really explain to people who don't sit and read school spreadsheets all the time what it means. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer.
Yes, explaining two minutes the complexity of a, of a school district budget. I have been trying to practice the explanation on how, on how to break down each of those categories and I have not been able to figure out how to explain it in less than two hours. So the information is available on the website. There is, when we, when we actually do get to present to the, we go over things line by line, but it is a 40-page, if I remember correctly, our director said a 40-page spreadsheet that is, that is compressed down to hopefully a single or maybe two pages of information and line items. I don't know, I mean, I would love to be able to, to make it crystal, to make it crystal clear for everyone where exactly the dollars are going, but I don't know how to, how to make that information even more available because it is all on the website. And we do have, we do have a yearly audit and we do the extensive audit. So we really drill down, not just the, you know, everything looks good and out the door. I will, I will say that, that we do take that extra level because we want to make sure that the dollars are being spent the way that we say they're going to be.
Thank you. And I would like to reiterate that you were trying to do that in a minute and a half, not in two minutes.
And you can see how well everybody understands now, right?
I'm just going to move on.
I'm going to, I'm going to continue trying to figure a way out and if I figure out how to say it.
Okay. Onto our third question from the audience. And Ms. Hul, you'll start for us here. With the shortage of teaching staff, how are you going to support staff burnout and morale? And how would you address the shortage of teachers and support staff?
I think this is a challenge, for sure. I, I really do. I see this, I see educators leaving the industry. I really think parents need to kind of come forward and step up if they can to help. I think we need support systems in the school to be able to support teachers when they are feeling burnout. There, there are a lot of tools out there that, that we might consider implementing where, you know, teachers have the ability to, you know, take breaks that they need mentally. But I, I think this is an area that, you know, I would need more information as a new, new person coming in on the board. I would definitely gather more information and start looking at other districts and seeing what they're doing to address their concerns. They might have some good ideas that we could use. I think we try to put in best practices and see if we can find other ways to recruit. And maybe, you know, there's a point where we can recruit less, less, less educated teachers and where, and put them in places where they can't, you know, they can support versus actually be leader in the classroom.
Thank you. Ms. Maderas.
Thank you. Yes, the shortage is a major issue for all districts, not just our own. But the burnout is a piece impacting morale that directly impacts, you know, the, the climate of our schools and the education our students are receiving. We have educators who are covering classes for other teachers because we, we don't have the ability to cover them. And that impacts planning time. It ultimately impacts the teacher's ability to meet the needs of their students. So to be honest, I think that one thing that's not funding-related is, you know, continuing to find ways to empower educators, to have the time and resources to develop strategies that are going to meet the needs of their students. They know their students best and to actually have the time and space to do that work and, and use data-informed strategies to advance what their students are doing in the classroom is, is key. But, you know, going back to financial resources, if we can't invest in additional support staff who want to be there supporting our kids, if we can't invest in, you know, having staffing levels that are going to encourage strategic planning, focusing on those strategies, the abilities for educators to collaborate with one another, that's going to be really tough. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer.
Yes, I, I was very happy to see that we actually have a new course at the high school called Introduction to Education. You know, because if we can't hire them, maybe we can teach them and they'll come back and they'll work with us. And I think that that is, that is what we really need to do. Out in the private sector, if you can't find skilled labor, you take on apprentice and you train your labor if you can't hire them fully trained. Over at 916, there, there was a shortage of special education teachers. They worked with, originally it was the University of Minnesota for a Grow Your Own program. And that has been extremely successful in being able to certify special education teachers, and there is a shortage of them as well. But they took the long-term approach and actually got those, those, those programs into place. And it's been very, very, very successful. Where the, where you can learn, you can work at the same time you're learning, you have the support and, and the feedback, and, and you get to work in the classroom and doing what you love. But we definitely need more. People are just not choosing to go into teaching because there's an awful lot that's, we have a lot, a really big app. I really want to continue. Okay. I really want to continue.
Ms. Zymet.
Yeah, Grow Your Own is awesome. I'm excited about that. I'm really excited about partnering with Black Men Teach. We got two brand-new teachers at North Park this year, and part of the reason that they partnered with North Park is because of the environment that we intentionally cultivate for our teachers there, where we respect people of color and we make it a place where they can thrive. And I think that for our teachers, culture is pretty much the biggest thing that we can offer them. Like, we don't have the funds that we need to have, and we're going to keep petitioning for that. But being heard is something that our teachers need. They need responsive leadership from us. When they bring us stuff, we come back and, and advocate for them. They need to be, people are leaving this profession because they're getting dumped on from the community. They're getting dumped on from parents. And the more that we as leaders can have our teachers' backs and just be there for them, be there to, to, to ask for the things that they need and to, to hold accountable the systems that are making things harder. I'm excited, even in, in the middle school, we've got a new program called Dreamline where there's people coming in to help the students that are struggling and to take some of that off of the plate of the teachers so that they can teach. And some of that emotional, social, emotional learning can happen through other venues. So I think as we can get creative in those ways.
Thank you. And for our next question, Ms. Maderas, you'll start. Do you support teaching comprehensive sex education in our schools?
I do support teaching comprehensive sex education in our schools. I think it's really important for students to have accurate information as they're going through the school system so that they're able to make, you know, decisions in their lives that are going to, you know, advance the kind of life that they want to live. I do know that we talk to families about what kind of education is going on in our schools, and they're given the opportunity to know what that is and to opt their student out if they have, you know, as a family, they want to talk about that differently. But I do think it is the responsibility of the schools to provide comprehensive, accurate information to students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer.
Yes, absolutely. With, with the amount of information that children have access to, having accurate information is, I, I, I think we would do them a disservice if we allowed, or if we withheld knowledge and they had to learn it all on the internet or through social media, which is another subject. Maybe there's a question later on, but that's all I'm going to say on that subject.
Thank you. Ms. Zymet.
Yeah. Sexual health education is science. It's understanding how your body works and how relationships work and how healthy interactions work. And it's important, it gives our students tools to navigate life. And if they're not taught the truth about their bodies and about, about sexuality, they are left to learn it from each other. And that just is not a winning scenario for anyone. So that's our job to, to make sure that kids have a, have a healthy understanding of, of their own bodies.
Thank you. Ms. Hul.
I, I agree with age-appropriate sex education. And I hear the other candidates talk about it's their job to make sure that we have this education for the kids. They didn't mention a single word like parent, mom and dad, or anything like that. If we're teaching sex ed and all the various positions and all the different types of sex that kids could have at a very young age, I think it's too heavy. It's too heavy of a topic. Let's leave our kids to be innocent. There is a value to innocence of children. Now, I agree that sex ed from a biological standpoint makes sense from a science standpoint. But when it comes to all the other issues around sex, I believe that parents are the ones who are in charge of the information that their children are receiving, and that if the school is choosing to go in a direction with comprehensive at whatever age, then children should be allowed to opt out. And we might see a lot of parents taking their kids out of the education system.
Thank you. All right. We're coming up on the end here. We don't have enough time to ask another question, get around the table. One of the things that we're going to do, I personally, is we have several more questions from the audience. And what I am willing to do is I'm going to type up those questions. I'll provide it to all four of you. And if you'd like to leave responses on your websites, you're free to do that, whether you do or not. We just like to provide that opportunity so that everybody in the audience gets heard at some point. Okay?
Thank you.
So at this point, we'll conclude. We'll remind you that there are more cookies and water over there. Right, Dawn?
Yes.
Okay. And I'd like to thank all four of our candidates for showing up tonight and taking our questions. So on behalf of Columbia Heights Local Number 710, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, audience behind me, and everybody at home watching this. It's been a pleasure to introduce you to our board candidates.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.